With the theater seating. Okay, so it's 7:04 PM. This is the meeting of the City of Castle Hills Zoning Commission. Meeting on February 7th, 2017 at Castle Hills City Hall, City Council Chambers at 209 Lemonwood Drive in Castle Hills, Texas. The members in attendance tonight are Mr. Aiken, Ms. Baker, Mr. Gray, Mr. Flynn, and Chairman Isbrand. The city secretary, the city manager are also here, and Mr. Schnall, who will introduce in a few minutes for the purpose of a presentation on this. So let's move to item number two. Consider approval of the August 5th, 2016 zoning commission minutes. I'm sure everyone had a chance to look at that extensive meeting minutes. Congratulations to everyone on their efficiency at that meeting. So we'll need a motion in a second. So, all right, I'll go this way. Ms. Baker and Mr. Aiken made the motion and seconded for approval on favor. Aye, it's unanimous. All right. Item number three. Consider the request from City Council to change section 50-564A. Notice of public hearings of the city zoning ordinance by providing public notice of Board of Adjustment Public Hearings on the city website in compliance with Local Government Mr. VanderWaal, do you want to present this item to council, please?
(inaudible) Okay. In your package, you have a sample announcement for a public meeting here for the City of Castle Hills that ran in the San Antonio Express News. The notice is very small, three-quarter inch by one and a half inch. It costs $124 for a one-day ad if we run it on a Wednesday, because that's the least expensive day of the week for notices. Currently, it's required by our ordinance, and Kim has just handed those out to you. Section 50-564, a notice of public hearings, and it's item A is what we're talking about, says the notice of public hearings before the Board of Adjustment shall be given by publication once in a newspaper of general circulation in the city or the official newspaper stating the time and place of such hearing, which time shall not be earlier than 10 days from the date of such publication. So it limits us when we can actually publish it in the newspaper. So we consulted with the city attorney, Mr. Mike Brennan, and Brennan says that the state law, it's only our local code, local ordinances which require us to publish it in the newspaper, that the public notice that's required by state law can be met by putting it on the website. We still do post signs on the applicant's property, and we mail notices to all properties within 250 feet, which is the next subparagraph underneath that section. But we feel it's a waste of money to take out an ad every time that we have a meeting when we could publish it on the website. In addition to that, we also post the agenda 72 hours in advance for any meetings, for any public meetings, in two or three different places, Kim. A website in two places, one at either door here for the municipal hall. So with that said, what we'd like to do is recommend some language for an ordinance that removes the requirement to publish in the newspaper. Instead, we will publish via the website. We will keep section B, or subsection B under 50-564, with all the other requirements for sending out mailers with people that are within 250 feet of the property. So that's it. I'd like to put this before the zoning commission to recommend to council, and we can draft up some sample language. I don't think we have any here that's prepared for today's meeting, right? But we'll put that language together before you go before council to make the recommendation.
All right, thank you, sir. Any comments or questions on this? Someone want to make a motion on it?
Do I need to do that?
Ms. Baker, it's always...
I move that we approve or grant the request from City Council to change section 50-564A, notice of public hearings to the zoning ordinance by providing a public notice of Board of Adjustment Public Hearings on the city website in compliance with Local Government Code 211.010D.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Flynn, any discussion?
I'll just say that it's my personal observation that I think any time there is a public meeting that there's a certain, I think, obligation that we have to be as aggressive and diligent as possible in communicating that to the public. I will also say that in a previous city where I resided and served on council before, and they were very proactive in communicating information out, we don't have that kind of system here in Castle Hills. I would hope that someday we do, because I think it's very important that we communicate as effectively as we can. That said, I think we all know that the newspaper is not particularly read widely anymore, and I'm sure, including the public notices section. And I would just make that observation that that probably makes this more of a practical matter to me, but I would again say that I hope that the City of Castle Hills will always be as aggressive as it can in proactively communicating to the public, and not just see this as complying or working within the confines of what the law sets up to do the minimum, but that we always do the maximum to communicate.
Sir, I'll take that as a challenge, too.
Thank you, sir.
To increase our efforts to communicate, and I'll be happy to hear whatever you have to recommend for us.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
I mean, you are the communicator, right?
You're the communicator.[438.12][438.12](laughing) Any other comments? All right, thank you for indulging me on that. So we have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor indicate by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, item number four. Consider the recommendations from the zoning review committee regarding the city zoning ordinance. We'll see where we get tonight, and I know this is a thorough process that has been initiated by the zoning review committee. And on behalf of all of you commissioners, I know that you share the sentiment that we're exceptionally grateful to all the members of the zoning review committee who have worked so diligently over months to put together these recommendations for us to consider tonight. I'll also say that the chairman of that committee, Mr. Mark Schnall, who is here tonight, I've had the privilege of working with, both as members of this commission and in other capacities in another city, and I can't think of anyone who I would place more confidence in than Mr. Schnall to lead us through a process like this. So, Mr. Schnall, to you and your committee, thank you very much, and we'll turn this over to you to begin the process of going through this.
Thank you. It's interesting to be on this side of the dais. I was on this commission for 25 years, about half of which the time I was chairman. This is the second zoning review committee that I've been on. The last one was about eight or nine years ago. This committee met 10 times between September of 2015 and March of 2016. It was delayed in getting to, the recommendations were delayed in getting to this commission due to the change in city management, and that's why it's a little bit late, later than that, for this to come to you. City manager has told me that he's got the ordinances set up to go through them pretty much in order on the screen. The only other thing I will say by introductory comments is that the former city manager, Diane File, did meet with the commission once, along with Mayor Howell, and gave the commission six areas that the city wanted specifically examined. Each of those six areas was assigned to one member of the commission, and I was assigned everything else. And so John Kenny was assigned to deal with things like height and height restrictions and parking restrictions, things of that nature. Susan Kilgore was assigned to do the home occupation section. Eric Friedland did the low impact zoning. Pam Grunwall did the definitions, which is where I think we'll start in a moment. Tim Turner did the PUD ordinance rewrite, and Terry Worth worked on the chart of zoning uses. The text changes, which are on the first three pages of the packet that was attached to the agenda this evening, are a result of my review line by line and section by section of the zoning ordinance. Except for the definitions, which Pam did, I did look at every section to see if we needed to update it or change it. So, starting with definitions, which I think is like the fourth, beginning of the fourth page of the material attached to the agenda. If everyone has had an opportunity to review these, I'm not sure we need to go through them one by one. What Pam did with the assistance of the committee was, as we identified some language later in the ordinance where we thought a definition would be useful, Pam was assigned to draft a definition, which then the committee discussed, modified in some cases, approved in some cases, or said, you know, we really don't need a definition of that other than what's in the dictionary. So we have modified definitions of accessory buildings. Assisted living is a use permitted in some districts, so we thought a definition of assisted living was appropriate. Same for continuing care facility. You'll see later on, we'll get to some things about solar energy and wind energy. The definitions that we put in here were originally part of those drafts, but were moved to the definition section. Again, daycare center is something that is used in our ordinance in the uses of specific districts. So is hospice. Kindergarten was not defined, and there was some concern about making a clearer definition of that term. And to our surprise, the word lot was not defined in the prior ordinance. So that definition was added. Similarly, paved, I don't think was previously defined, nor pervious or permeable cover. And similarly, preschool, again, used in the ordinance but not previously defined. You can see that the city managers put up lot, comma, corner, and lot frontage, but if you go before that, I don't think you'll find a definition of lot. Okay? Okay, so you've got lot area, lot corner, lot frontage, but not the word lot. So that's one of the reasons why we did put the word lot in for, as a definition. And vehicle queuing, again, I think is used in some of the commercial zoning language, so we did go ahead and put in a definition of vehicle queuing. And everything that the committee did comes as a recommendation to the zoning commission, which will in turn make a recommendation to the city council for action to enact an ordinance to make whatever amendments both the commission recommends and the council decides to do. So we were simply an advisory body, a recommending body. The decisions rest with the five members of the zoning commission. Any questions about any of the definitions? Why don't you jump down to Article 13, or Division 13, which is the PUD? 407. So one of the things that we were advised by the city manager and the mayor was that there was concern that the current language under planned unit development, or PUDs, did not give enough detail to applicants and did not give enough structure to folks wanting to do a planned unit development. I think in my tenure on the zoning commission, we heard one or two cases asking for a planned unit development. One of them is a little area off of West Avenue, just this side of Antonian. And even members of the commission, after having heard, I thought, a pretty good presentation, had confusion about it. And so Tim Turner worked primarily on this language. Much of the concepts and ideas in this ordinance are tailored af of the ordinance of the City of Chavino Park, because in looking for ordinances, Tim and I found that that city's local ordinance seemed to be the closest to what made sense for a community like Castle Hills. It was not copied word for word by any means, but there's a lot of similarities in this proposed language for the new sections under planned unit development and what you'd find if you looked at the city ordinances of the City of Chavino Park. As you can see, the current text of 50-407 provides no guidance, no details about requirements. So there are very specific requirements that the committee felt would assist the zoning commission and the city council in evaluating a planned unit development proposal. These are in new sections, or new proposed sections, 50-411 and 50-412. And there are then some other provisions about, you know, what action is anticipated, both by the commission and by the council. And finally, there is a time limit, so that if someone comes in, gets approved, either of a concept plan or a detail plan, but then does not proceed with the project, then it will automatically expire. A concept plan within one year and a detail plan for, in two years. You know, the city goes to a lot of trouble when they review these kinds of plans, because it requires more than just a review of a typical zoning application. And so, once the city has done that vetting process, if the developer decides not to go forward, we don't want either the city or the property to be tied to a plan that was never implemented. So we thought that putting in some reasonable time limits to make sure a development that was approved happens seemed prudent.
Any questions, comments?
Question. Mr. Schnall, does the zoning board review both the concept plan and the detail plan?
Yes.
Okay. So conceivably, we're going to see people more than once, and we can make requests of them?
Yes. I mean, you know, obviously, I don't think anyone on the commission wants to micromanage somebody else's project, but at the same time, you know, we want the commission to be looking out for the best interest of the community as a whole, and make sure that the commission has answers to its questions and the information in a documented form to be able to make an informed decision about whether to approve or not approve a planned unit development.
By the time a planned unit development either submits the concept plan or the detail plan, has a city engineer reviewed those submissions? City manager may have to answer that question, I don't know.
Well, you know, that, I think the correct answer is, it depends. If the applicant reaches out to the city engineer, then it's possible that the city engineer will have reviewed it. But ordinarily, the city engineers that I generally work with, I'll look to city officials to task them, because I don't think we want an outside developer, even the citizen of our city, to be incurring city expense by going directly to the city engineer.
Right.
So the likelihood is that if the city engineer was contacted independently, he or she would contact the city manager and say, what do you want me to do? And so the city manager would have the ultimate authority in decision-making as to whether to have the city engineer go forward with any review before it got to the commission, or more accurately, even before an application was filed. But I think we want to, you know, kind of respect that and make sure that, you know, city expense isn't incurred by a private party. I think the city engineer should be reviewing it.
This was the situation that happened to us on the last PUD, where we, as a zoning commission, did not have a recommendation from the city engineer on a question we had, but they said we didn't have the authority, if I remember right, to ask the city engineer to get engaged, because we would be incurring expenses. So I think that's where we're going with this, is can we, as the zoning commission, have something from the city engineer that has already looked at the situation prior to it coming to us, perhaps beyond the conceptual stage, I guess?
Yeah, I'm not aware of what, of the process itself. I know when, typically what we do is when somebody's coming in to file for development or something like that, they have to pay a permit, permitting fee, and then we pay for any engineering expenses from that permitting fee. I would see this falling into the same type of a category, that when they come in for their application, they would have to pay some type of a fee upfront in order for the city to consider that, and then any engineer's fees would be, would be taken out of that fee. So we would, I would imagine that what we would have to do is develop a fee schedule for this, this process as well. Kim, does that sound right to you? So as the new guy, that's the way I think it would work.
Yes.
I still think we need to go back, though, and look at the situation that occurred to us, because the only way we could engage the city engineer was for the zoning commission to recommend approval, and so it was controversial amongst the zoning commission, because we couldn't get the information from the engineer unless we approved it. Well, we didn't approve it, if I remember correctly, and so it died there. And that's, that did a disservice, in my mind, to the organization or individuals that are trying to get the PUD, because it was water runoff, if I remember, and some other issues. And so it was not fair for us to have to be put in that position.
Right, and I think so what you're asking us to do, and what we can certainly do is, before we meet with council, we need to go back and look at the process. What is the process? Where are fees applied? You know, what types of fees would they be? Because you're absolutely right. If we want to encourage development, then we need to be able to assess that development through the means of a licensed professional engineer.
Or if the questions are unanswered, the zoning commission needs the authority to engage the city engineer.
Right, right. But the only way to do that is through some type of a fee system at the front end of this, when they apply. So we'll have to take a look at that between now and when council meets, and we'll, we can close that loop with you, Joe, if you'd like. I just, I think that that mechanism needs to be in place, is what you're saying. So we need to ensure there is...
Yeah, and it would be my opinion that before we would want to take action on this, that's one of the items we would want clarity on.
Right, right.
There could be clarity, because this proposal, and I remember that very well, you know, we were, we kept, the issue dealt with the rain, the water runoff, right? And, you know, we were kind of caught in between a rock and a hard spot of saying, well, we approve it, and thinking that then was the city engineer going to actually do his job properly? Was there going to be an issue? So we felt like we were between a rock and a hard spot. The way this plan is written now, we at least have, there's two stages, right? There's a concept, which I would think, and maybe that's how, maybe that's how this gets resolved, there's a concept plan, and on that particular one, we might have been great with that, or we would have been okay with it. And then in the detailed plan, at that point in time, we'd have to come back and, and we had to see that it actually was properly engineered. So, so maybe that's, maybe that's where it was, before there was a one step, as far as I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a two-step plan. I think you've come close to what I was going to comment on, and so did the city manager. The concept plan is designed for someone to come to the commission and say, this is the idea we have, here's some level of detail, not, they're not, they're not being forced to spend quite as much money as they would for the detail plan, but they can, they can present the concept plan and see whether they have support from the commission on their concept and the plan they have. At the point we get to the detail plan, there's a requirement, for example, under 50-412, item seven, that the location of all creeks, ponds, lakes, floodplains, or other water retention or major drainage facilities and improvements be in the detail plan. And a drainage plan by a professional engineer is an integral part of that requirement. The city manager, I think, you know, hit on the most important thing, and that is that because this kind of a development is going to require more vetting by outside staff like the city engineer, may also require extra time by the city attorney, that, that the commission and the council might well consider having a different filing fee for a planned unit development zoning, which would help cover some, if not all, of those costs.
And by the way, in the case that we had, there was, if I remember right, an independent assessment done by an engineer, not for the city, but for the person doing the work. And our question was, has our city engineer validated what that engineer did?
Right.
Okay.
And the other issue was, who was going to pay for our engineer to look at it? So that's where part of the fee assessment comes, and I know that other people who have developed property have been submitted bills for the city engineer, and they pay the city and/or the city engineers bill them directly. So I know that there are pass-through mechanisms, that it doesn't all have to come right out of their application fee.
I have a question on the concept versus the detail plan. If we are looking at a concept plan, and we approve, you know, we'll get public input, and we have, and we approve the concept of the PUD, then that, to me, almost is de facto concurrence with the detail plan, assuming they can meet the specific, the technical specifications.
Well, and...
Am I correct in that assessment?
And assuming they're consistent. And if someone comes in with a conceptual plan to put in a daycare center, and then they bring you a detail plan that's a nursing home...
Right.
That's not, that's not acceptable.
So we would not really see the detail plan, or we would not need to see the detail plan. I mean, if we've agreed with, if we've accepted the concept, then it goes forward, and then they, like you say, that's consistent, the detail plan is consistent with the concept, and it meets all the technical criteria, it's a done deal.
I thought the way I read it was, is that the developer or the applicant could choose to submit first a concept plan and then a detail plan, or they could skip the concept and submit just a detail plan. I don't know that we should be forwarding and approving anything without a detail plan.
Well, yeah, and that's my concern. I mean, are our hands tied if we, if we approve the concept plan? What recourse do we have later on?
Well, my thought would be, is that our hands aren't tied, but at the same time, you know, go back to the project that we talked about last year, and there were probably a couple of us that liked the plan, a couple of us that didn't, but we were caught between a rock and a hard spot, because we were afraid we didn't know what the real answer was on the storm run.
Right.
This would allow us to look at the, to look at the concept and say, and agree as a committee, do we want to, do we want to put in there or not?
Sure.
Okay, so we can do that.
Sure.
But we haven't approved the whole plan, in my opinion, at that point in time. We have approved the concept, so I think if, as a committee, we pass that, then we're obligated to, I don't say we can change our mind on the concept, we can, I don't think we can come back, I wouldn't want to come back three months later and say, no, you know, I changed my mind, I don't want to put there.
Right.
But if the details aren't in conformity to what we think they should be for Castle Hills, then I think we do change our minds. But, you know, so are we obligated? Well, I don't think so, but I think morally, if we approve the concept for a PUD, and the details are there, then I think it does get approved.
Well, and, and I think our discussion here is, I think we're in agreement. What I'm getting at is, like, I don't think the procedures are well-defined.
But, but it, but it allows us to approve the concept without the builder having to go out and spend a bunch of money.
I get that, and I, and I agree with that completely.
Right.
And I think it's a great idea, but I'm just concerned about any kind of, you know, yea or nay, do we, can we go forward?
That's right. At what point do we have the authority to recommend to city council, we agree or we disagree?
So if, if I, that was, that's my question, and Mr. Schnell, help, help us here. So if I read this section 50-413 correctly, that we would, it says may, but it sounds like in theory at least, we would pass a recommendation from the zoning commission to the city council regarding the proposed concept plan. What I'm not sure I see as clearly is that if city council approves that, and then we receive a detailed plan, how the interaction with the council works then? Because the amendments, again, talks about proposed concept plan, the change in detail plan does not say that it was previously approved by the city council.
I think it does. And, and I, I do want to distinguish something Ms. Baker said. The, the two plans can be presented simultaneously.
Right.
But both plans need to be presented.
Okay.
The idea is to give a, a, a developer the opportunity to not spend quite as much money on the detail plan and make, vet his concept, see if, if the concept is something that gets support from the commission. But the council, it, it's designed when, the council may, after receiving a recommendation from the zoning commission, act on a proposed concept plan, is, is in 413, and maybe the verb "may" is the wrong verb. Maybe that verb should be "shall" or "will" instead of "may." But then, later, it talks about the council has to act, and said, if, if not considered simultaneously with a concept plan application, the council may, after receiving a recommendation from the zoning commission, act on a proposed detail plan for which a concept plan has previously been approved. So, you know, there, there has to be an approved concept plan before the council is going to approve a detail plan. It can be done at the same meeting, but they both have to get council approval.
So, as I look at forty, or 50-415 amendments, changes in concept plan, this is after the, the detail plan, a previously approved concept plan may only be amended by city council after receiving a recommendation from the zoning commission. And then changes in a detailed plan, a previously approved detailed plan may only be amended by ordinance, by city council after receiving a recommendation from a zoning commission. So it sounds to me that once the concept has been accepted, they can go forward.
Well, they can go forward to present a detail plan. They can't start building their proposal until they have the zoning finalized by ordinance, by the council, and for that matter, have the property platted and get a building permit.
Okay, but the only thing we could really adjust would be like, I mean, we could tweak it, I guess, with, we could recommend adjustments, but we couldn't say, no, this is not going to fly.
Yeah, so if we separate, think about them separate for a minute, rather than concurrent simultaneous.
Right.
So they come in, and someone says, this is the concept, and we say, that seems, that sounds reasonable, that's consistent with the law and the charge of this commission, and we make a recommendation to city council that they approve the concept plan.
Concept.
Assuming city council goes along with that, then that would empower them, if you will, to then go prepare their detail plan. And then bring their detail plan here, and we say that is inconsistent with, you know, our ordinance or the welfare of the community, and we make a recommendation to council that they reject it, and council would act on that.
You know, I think the problem with this is, I, I think it's a, I think what it needs to be had, because the section 50-414, when I read it, it took me about, it's taken me about five times to understand it. I think we need a paragraph 50.415 that mirrors 50.413. And if you go up to 50.1413, it says, "Action on Concept Plan." So I think we need a paragraph that says, "Action on Detailed Plan," that says exactly, "City Council May, after receiving a recommendation from the zoning commission, US, act on a proposed detailed plan." I think we need to state that specifically in here, so that we know that it's going to come back to us.
Scroll down.
And I just don't understand the language, and I, I think the language in 414, again, I'm actually somewhat educated, and it took me about five times to really understand it. So I think we need to spell it out, so that the normal person, me, can read it and understand it. I think that's what we need, I think that would clarify it.
I, I, I don't disagree.
Something like that, I mean, something like that.
I'm in, I'm in the same situation. I've read this several times, I feel like there's three different places you have to read it to see.
Right, no, it is, right. But the forty, 50.413 is very clear, the zoning commission, the city council can act after the zoning commission recommends. I think we need that same paragraph on the detail, exactly, to clarify.
You, you have essentially that language in 50-414, sub three.
But I don't, I'm sorry, I just don't read it. I mean, I, I read it five times before I understood it, so that means, if it took me five times to read it, I will admit, I only went to UT, not Texas A&amp;M, but still.
I would tell you that, let me tell you how I see it.
It's confusing.
Can I make a, can I make a recommendation?
And also, 5414, it says, this is indicating a concept plan and a detailed plan are simultaneously submitted, as opposed to sequentially.
Well, and that's just another, yeah, that's...
It says "it may."
So it's a different process.
Right.
I think I can help a little bit here. So if you take and you mirror what you did in paragraph 50-412, that says detailed plan requirements, if you were to go and insert that between the two, between 413 and 414, and call that detail, or sorry...
Move, move 50-413 up to...
Right.
Proceed 5412.
Right, you just need to, you need to separate action out separately for sub-paragraph three, which is what Mark is saying, right?
And then you, then you have detailed plan requirements and action on detailed plan.
You need to mirror the same thing that you did before for...
Right, right.
Exactly.
Right, for the concept plan with the detailed plan, and then it would make sense to you, and it'd be easy to follow. Even an Aggie can do it.
Just a little clarification is all it is.
But I think you need to break, I think, I mean, but we've got two different things here. And I agree with the sequential, the, the sequencing. But we've got a discussion on a, a concept plan submittal, and then a discussion on a detailed plan submittal. We need a third section to discuss if they're both presented simultaneously.
Just a separate, separate, yeah, that'd probably be the way to do it.
Right, a separate, a separate section for addressing when they're both...
And that's fine, if somebody wants to come in with all of it at one time.
And the process, and you can mirror things, and I think that would probably clarify a lot of it.
Right.
And I'm an Aggie too, so, sort of.
I figured there were, I knew there was somewhere around.
I'm, I'm a pseudo-Aggy, I got...
We're over our quota.
Well, I got my...
Can we cut their mics, please, all the Aggies, I'm sorry? All right, Mr. Schnell, this, in between all that...
I won't even go, I won't even go ahead, I won't even tell an Aggie joke now. So I think what, what I'm hearing is, first, we're going to take what is typed in as 50-413, we're going to make that 50-412. We're going to take what's typed in as 54, 50-412, make it 50-413.
Correct.
We're going to take 50-14, subs one and two, and leave them as they are. We're going to take sub three and make it 50-415, and we're going to add a sentence to make it clear that if they're considered simultaneously, this happens, and then we can leave in the current text, if not considered simultaneously, what happens. We then renumber fifty, current 50-415 to be 54-16, and what's now 54-16 becomes 54-17, and what is 54-17 becomes 54-18. And, you know, I think that with, with the commission's permission, I'm certainly glad to work with Mr. Vandewoally on documenting this in a typewritten fashion for your future consideration.
Great. Is that capture the commission's desire here?
I believe so.
Thank, thank you for that. So before we leave PUDs, then I just want to, to make sure that...
I do have another comment on the PUD.
Go ahead.
If we could. On the minimum development size, I think that's really important, I'm glad to see that, because we've had issues with that. But we have a, a minimum size of two acres for non-residential developments, and five acres with a minimum lot for residential developments. What if we have a mixed-use development, where we have, like, stores on a basement floor, and then apartments or something above that? That's a mixed-use. Would that fall into the two-acre minimum?
I would argue yes.
Okay.
Typically, the rule is the most restrictive restriction applies. The analogy would be, if there's a deed restriction that says a setback is 100 feet, and there's a zoning ordinance that says the setback is 50 feet, the setback is 100 feet. And that, that is, there's case law on that. So, and I, and I'm glad that you mentioned that clause, because that clause was the subject of lengthy discussion at the committee, that there was a, a sense that, you know, this, to be a PUD, it needed to be a decent-sized piece of property.
Right.
As opposed to allowing someone with a single-family lot like mine, which is three, two-thirds of an acre, create a PUD.
Right.
And so we wanted to make sure that there were minimum lot sizes. And this, this does mean that we're not likely to see very many of these, between the, the, you know, what it costs to do an assemblage, and the amount of undeveloped property within the city limits.
Are you, are there questions?
This is all supposed to be done in relation to the comprehensive plan, which we still are, don't have. We call it a master plan, yeah, that...
Well, it's called a comprehensive plan in chapter 211 of the Local Government Code.
Okay.
Okay?
So, yeah, we've just been using master plan for that terminology.
But, you know, cities, yeah. Yeah, but I, I think I have the statute here.
All right, so before we leave this, I want to make sure that I understand the desire of the commission here. So regarding what is now 50-413, action on concept plan, whatever that ends up being numbered, the action on concept plan, the action on detail plan, or action simultaneous, that the request is that the verbiage be "shall," not "may." So city council shall, right? Okay, so you gentlemen, good with that? We're asking for the, the "may" to be "shall" here? The "may" to be "shall"?
Yes.
Okay. And then, lastly, before we leave this one, to underscore, I think we're looking for a recommendation back regarding city engineer review. So the formula by which that is done, whether that's a different filing fee, an additional fee, or whatever, is separate from the, the ordinance, but that's what we're looking for, is to have that review as part of the process.
Now, what, what Mr. Vandewoally may want to...
A detailed plan, that's correct, yeah.
Mr. Vandewoally, what Mr. Vandewoally may want to do is just check with some comparable communities to see how they treat this, because I can see a possibility of just incorporating into this PUD ordinance, a requirement that the applicant, at the applicant's expense, have their, their engineering plans reviewed by the city engineer. It may be, though, the communities do this with an increased filing fee. Might be useful to just know what's out there and what the options are, that others, other general law cities are doing.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll look to your, y'all's expertise on how best to approach it in terms of, you know, where that cost is and bring a recommendation forward. But this is something that's simmered out here a year.
Yes.
We've been talking about this, and I think it's very important that we, we get it right. Okay.
And a point of privilege, can we use the word "will" instead of the word "shall"?
I, I, I shall go along with that recommendation, if you will.
I shall. That's, that's the latest in legal terminology.
Okay, great.
And I think Jana agrees.
Good, good to know.
That, that we try to use "will," which is a more specific, definite term.
Okay.
Than "shall," which some people think means "should."
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. All right, anything else on PUD? All right, Mr. Schnell, thanks for that, we can move on.
I'm impressed at how fast this is going. Home occupations was, it was sort of rewritten a little, but for the most part, there may not be, you know, dramatic changes in the, in the reviewed, in the revised text than in the, in the current text. It is clear that a, a home business occupation can only be in the districts which are what I would call purely residential, the single-family, the small-lot, single-family, the townhouse, and then the apartment-related district, duplex and apartment districts. And the conditions of use, I think, one through eight are roughly the same, not exactly the same, as the current ones. There are, there were some things that we wanted to make clear could not be done as a home occupation, that's in sub nine, nine, 10, 11, you know, through basically 15, are all different ways of saying, you can't do this and you can't do that in, in a home occupation, because we want to preserve, to the maximum extent possible, the residential character of a neighborhood for the commu, for the neighbors, in, in the vicinity of the home being used for a home occupation.
When does a home occupation become like a commercial venture?
Probably the day it starts.
Because, I mean, that goes to zoning, doesn't it?
Well, that's, that's why communities have done this, is, is, is by including a, a very restricted, limited type of things that can be done at one's residence, that don't change the character of a residential street to being a commercial or retail street. It's, it's really designed, you know, traditionally or originally, it was really designed for the people who worked from home. And, and it, it has evolved dramatically since then. It's a, it's a community choice. I do see most cities having some home occupation ordinance, whether we use what is up on the screen, if Mr. Vandewoally can move to 50-427, he's right there. You know, right now, the uses are very limited. And, and what the committee was told was that, that, that those uses may have been appropriate in the 1970s and 1980s, and maybe even to the 1990s. But in the 21st century, there are ways to do something more than just an office, or an art studio, or a piano teacher in a residential district, without interfering with the residential uses in the immediate vicinity. And so we try to come up with, with an expansion of what can be done, but still try and protect the immediate neighbors and others from any disruptions.
I'm, I'm just curious on 50-428, items 11 and 12, is there some unique distinction there that caused a separation of those, or is it just simply ticking off different things?
I, I think it was because Ms. Kilgore asked each member of the committee to send her recommendations about what would, should not be permitted, and I think she may have just included them as separate numbered items. And I think she may have just included them as separate numbered items out of consideration for them coming from different members of the committee. I'm not sure there's any real logic to it. It just would be a long run-on sentence if we had 10 through 15 all listed right there. But I, Mr. Isbrand, I think that's the reason.
Okay.
Well, number 11 strikes me as businesses that require a license. You'd probably have, you'd have an operating license.
Well, but that's true, I think, for most of those, although not furniture stores or, or clubs necessarily. But, I mean, you need a license to sell vehicles, retail. You need a license to be a heating or plumbing contractor. I'm not sure there's much more logic to how these were divided. It may also have been the kind of service involved with the number 11 being more retail-type services and number 12 being a little bit more extensive type of service. I mean, I don't think anyone wants to have a plumbing contractor with six plumbing repair trucks parked in their driveway and he calls it a home occupation.
I guess, well, the reason I asked is, and I think we're all aware of issues that have come up previously regarding people doing vehicle maintenance repairs there. That's, the first question I had is if that was the reason why it was separated. But I guess to keep coming back to as well, the language of number 11 that says retail or wholesale services or sales, including but not limited to, that's a very broad brush then of not limited to. So what, where does the limitation begin? Because then we have these others in here that are very specific. I think I didn't articulate that very well. I'm kind of hung up on the but not limited to because it seems in the other areas, we're very clear in our definition of it.
So, we want to say this and others as we see fit.
Yeah, that's, so, yeah, subject exactly to what?
I think that's more protective though of the city, in my mind, be able to say, oops, we forgot that business or something like that, like coffee roasters or something.
Yeah, I was going to say, I see what you're saying.
Coffee roasters. I see what you're saying, Joe.
But, and I don't, I don't want to be excessive about it, but then shouldn't that same language be in the others too? That these are, you know-
There's some examples, but-
Yeah, but not limited to.
Right, it's not inclusive.
Is that, am I-
It bothers me, it's kind of open-ended, but I guess if you did something and you started getting a lot of complaints
Well, you didn't put a vape shop. I mean, what if it's a vape shop or something? Right. You want to-
And you can't list everything.
That's right.
Agreed, but it seems like we attempt to in the other items.
You're saying we should-
The other, the other items are very specific. It is limited to these things. That's the one item that it is not as specific. It leaves it open-ended.
Well, perhaps we could, could take that wording out and have a last sentence.
I don't know if it needs to be taken out or added to every other one, but I just, there's an inconsistency.
Or a separate sentence that says that covers that.
Or if you're not, if you're going to put not limited to, why don't you combine, not limited to and combine number 12?
I think the difference-
But then you have 13 and 14, the rest of them too.
I think the difference is, is that it's referring to retail or wholesale. And the other ones don't involve the sale of goods, maybe just services. Although a nail salon kind of does both, tattoo parlor. I think that may be the limiting aspect, is that it's retail or wholesale, sales or services. And the others-
Well, you got boat sales on 12.
Or more personal services.
You could perhaps, I like the way the first one is worded, that it categorizes it, as you were saying, Joe, where it says but not limited to. But the second one would require something that would say some, the home occupation shall not be of an industrial, commercial nature, including but not limited to vehicle or boat sales, repair, painting, heating, so on and so forth. Because I, and I, I do like protecting our residents and the city in the, in the verbiage by leaving it a little open-ended because you can't think of every eventuality here and what, what people might get up to as far as businesses in their homes. And, and you can't judge it until you know what it is that they're doing in their homes. I mean, it doesn't say in here, run a concrete business anywhere that I saw. But if they started running a concrete business next door to you, you know, I think it's good to say, including but not limited to. So it gives you some, some room to maneuver.
Yeah, and I guess if I were the, the individual on the other side of this that said, well, wait a minute, it doesn't say it in the one that applies to me, but you specifically did it for the others. So, it actually, I think, could be a little bit more precarious in protection of the homeowners if we-
So, the but not limited to ought to be added to all the statements then?
That's what I'm wondering. Is that, is that excessive, Mr. Schnall, from your point of view?
Because the other ones, Ms. Baker was on, I think the point was that retail and wholesale sales, we wanted to make clear, give some examples so there wasn't a question about what we were talking about. In 12, 13, and 14, it's very clear. I don't think we need including but not limited to. And I'm not sure how we can incorporate it in 12, 13, or 14 because they are very specific things that are not permitted. The vehicle sales, the air conditioning and, and heating contractor services, things like that, the animal care, although there are some examples for animal care, stable kennel or veterinary practice. And then the number of persons who can be in a home occupation which involves daycare or adult care. Certainly, you know, if, if the will of the commission is to try and incorporate some additional concepts here, we can see, you know, how we can accommodate that concern.
And not, not to beat the horse to death too many times, but so, under number 12, my interpretation, that is, I can store boats on my property because it doesn't specifically say I can't.
It's prohibited somewhere else.
But maybe-
Well, if you go to sell it.
You could, you could open a welding shop. And that's what I'm trying to say, is I like the verbiage that you adopted, Mr. Schnall, in, in 11 to say, and to categorize it somehow, to say the home occupation shall not be of a commercial or industrial nature, something like that, including but not limited to vehicle or boat sales, repair, painting, heating, air conditioning, glazers or painting services. Just categorize it so that, you know, if somebody can't come in, as you pointed out, and say, well, it's not on your list. You know, I'm a welder, I want to open a welding shop next door, at my house, and there's nothing that precludes it. And if you live next door to that guy, you'd sure wish it said limited but not, you know, including but not limited to in that clause.
Well, I think, I think that's excellent. If that's acceptable to the commission, that makes sense to me.
What we're doing is basically combining examples.
Right.
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 That are not all inclusive.
And they're, and they're not all inclusive, meaning that, what Mr. Van De Walle was saying was correct. I mean, it's a, again, a legal term of art that, that's used to be able to encompass more than what's specifically stated if the request is something akin to it or similar to it. So, I think that, and that's a good way to do it in number 12. I do want to say one thing about 15, which is the, the short-term rental provision. There is a bill in the legislature this session, the current session, that would prohibit a general law city from prohibiting short-term rentals. So-
So, is that like Airbnb?
Airbnb, yeah.
So, you're saying we cannot do like Airbnb?
No, I'm, I'm saying that, right now, I don't think this language is anywhere in our ordinances. I don't know, maybe Mr. Brennan did an ordinance that prohibits short-term rental. I wrote them in the city, wrote one of those ordinances in the city where Mr. Isbrand used to be on the city council. And I have written it for at least one other city. But here, what's changed is that someone has introduced a bill in the legislature that says that it is, it is unlawful for a general law city, in fact, it may be for any city, I haven't looked at it recently, to prohibit short-term rentals. It's kind of a pro Airbnb bill.
Right.
That's the argument. But, but if you live next door to one where they were renting it to high school basketball coaches during the NCAA tournament and they were having parties till four o'clock in the morning and littering the neighborhood, you might feel differently about that comment.
But there are other ordinances on that that could-
There are.
Like noise ordinances and littering ordinances.
There are nuisance ordinances and things like that, you know.
But, but I think that experience has taught some other municipalities that those nuisance ordinances in and of themselves sometimes don't remediate the situation.
Right, right. So, I mean, my, my suggestion is since that bill has not even been assigned to a committee yet, probably, because I don't think the speaker has assigned committees in the House. He hasn't, as of this afternoon, on one bill that I'm personally tracking. They're anticipating between 8,000 and 10,000 bills being filed in this session of the legislature. There are 2,400 now. So, there's no guarantee that anti-Airbnb, that pro-Airbnb bill will pass. But I did want to point this out, and I'm sure Mr. Brennan will monitor that if this section stays in this ordinance.
I guess my question is, is that a, is it a zoning commission issue? Or is that a code violation issue if a homeowner within the bounds of Castle Hills is an Airbnb participant? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, the answer is, right now, there's no ordinance that prohibits it, that I'm aware of in Castle Hills.
And that would fall under zoning?
Typically, it's, it's an issue about land use. That's what zoning is, use of the land. The, the counterargument is that a short-term rental is still a residential use. But, you know, we were successful in county court at law shutting down the one in this other city.
I guess I would have to think about, as a zoning commission member, if we're just blanket saying, we do not agree with this because this is a growing market that we see. I'm not going to do it with my house. But I think it's a very growing thing. The millennials are into this and we don't want the millennials coming out in droves saying Castle Hills is unfriendly to that type of organization whether it's VRBO or Airbnb or something like that. I'd love to, you said, we don't have an existing code today for the city of Castle Hills saying you cannot do this.
As, as far as I know, no. Again, the city manager can check with the city attorney, but I'm not aware of any.
We can check with Brennan on this. I do know that in single-family district, it does talk about accessories, accessory uses. So, in other words, other buildings on your property shall not be rented but may be occupied by occasional non-paying guests and by full-time employees living on the premises who function as domestic help or caregivers. So, this is kind of in keeping with this. And Mr. Schnall, as we get later on, will say, in that same section, they were going to add another section that talked about short-term rental being prohibited of, of single-family district dwellings. So, it's, it's, it's consistent throughout what you're recommending, I believe.
Yeah.
But we can ask Brennan, we can ask Brennan, we can ask Brennan the question, if it's legally sufficient, I guess, is the question. But I guess the question to the commission then is, is that the direction you want to head?
Well, I'd like to ask, because I don't know what other cities do. Joe, you said you were involved with another city. Did y'all address this issue? Or is that what he's talking about?
That was the case, that Mr. Schnall was talking about.
Okay.
I, I think it's a very good point, and thank you for bringing it up because this is worthy of some debate. My experience in that other city would tell me, it was terrible for the continuity and welfare of that area.
For multiple properties or was it single?
This was a, this was a single property.
It was a problem.
Right. That was well before Airbnb-
Right.
And other-
That's correct. And Airbnb has some regulations around it.
Right.
Where you vet both sides of it.
So, so where it's, I think it does-
I just think we need to think about it before we come out and say, we are against this or we're prohibiting this. Because I think that could cause some things that we don't need for the city of, we have enough problems as it is. And the last thing we need is the millennial groups at Rackspace saying, don't go to Castle Hills because they don't like Airbnb.
Well, and I'll say though, that if the house next door to mine suddenly becomes one-
If they follow the law and follow the rules, right?
If, 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 and, and from the previous experience, it can be a very lengthy and litigious process.
Right.
And the people who sacrifice the inconvenience of that are the property owners who live there and comply with the law in terms of the use of that.
I agree with you, Joe, I agree.
So, it is a balance, I think.
In, in our experience, we've used Airbnb all over the country and there are clear, even in Austin, right off of Sixth Street or South Congress, thou shalt not make noise after 10:00 PM. You know, things like that are certainly within the confines of those rules. I just want us to think about it before the zoning commission becomes responsible for, I guess, the enforcement or the allowance of folks to do that.
And I don't have all the definitions in front of me of the, of the districts, but I guess that's the other thing I would want to look at is, is it more?
And we have two rooming units too. I'm not sure what rooming units are.
We, we skipped the, the section-by-section comments or recommendations because I thought we would do them last. But you'll see in the specific district regulations, in all six of the residential districts, you will see that a new, the committee is recommending a new section that says, short-term rental is prohibited in all the residential districts.
Okay.
I understand the comment about the millennials, but, you know, I, I think that when I moved to Castle Hills, the city letterhead said, "Community of beautiful homes." And, and we were a residential community where people took great pride in their homes. That really hasn't changed a lot in the many years since I moved to Castle Hills. I don't think that prohibiting short-term rentals sends a message to millennials to the same extent.
Well, I don't mean just millennials. I mean, that's probably, that's a large population, I think. But I'm not a millennial and I use it all the time.
So, I, and again, this deserves some debate, discussion. I just want to be clear that the way we're reading this now, this Section 50-427, that this applies to these districts, A, single, double A, single 1,800 square feet, triple A, townhouses, B, duplexes, C, low-rise apartments, and D, high-rise apartments. So, I think if you want to continue to have this discussion, it's important to have it in the discussion of all of these types of housing that would be impacted.
I do have a question on number 14. It says, "The home occupation shall not involve school or childcare for more than four children or adult care for more than two adults." What does that do to group homes? Are they under a different code section because they fall under a different zoning designation?
Well, the, the shared home group, the shared group housing for disabled persons is protected by Chapter 123, I think, of the Health and Safety Code.
Okay.
And that's Division 15. It starts in Section 5455. The, the distinction would be that if someone, you know, meets the definition of group home, then the, it would supersede the home occupation's provisions because state law supersedes a local ordinance.
On number 14, is there a, is it a standardized formula of four children and two adults? Or two adults? Or where did those numbers come from?
I'm, I'm trying to see what we had in the prior ordinance. I don't see it in the prior ordinance. It came, you know, it was discussed, it was discussed by the committee, but I do frankly don't remember the detail. No, I don't think, I don't think it existed. The, the closest thing was the teaching to not more than four students in 50-427. Scroll, scroll up a little bit, you'll see it.
Could I glance at that real quick?
Yeah.
Teach sheet.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the clarification for what A and what they are from, this is us, most of us, we're going to be A's, all the way down to whatever these other duplexes. They're saying you can't even Airbnb, I'm just using that as an example, like your apartment.
Your apartment.
If you're in Castle Hills, that's screw us if we sign, same thing here. Why we have code enforcement and law enforcement.
What would happen if you had a resident?
That's not-
It'd be the same action.
Absolutely. This is, you know-
It'd be the same action.
No, it's not, it's, right, right, yeah, yeah. I will say that I have certainly seen deed restrictions that prohibit people in certain subdivisions from having any kind of childcare or daycare for profit, same logic as prohibiting other commercial uses in those subdivisions, but I really can't remember the details of why the committee's recommendation is not more than four children or two adults. It probably is more subjective than objective.
And not to be anti-kid or anything, but four children can be a lot of children in someone's house or yard.
Well, and that also brings up the whole thing, it says that you can't have more than one patron visiting you at any time, and that you have to provide so much parking, so maybe that relates back to how many kids and parents are going to be dropped off and how many adults, I don't know if you're being cared for if you're able to drive, but maybe it relates back to that. I also have a question about bed and breakfast, I mean, that may kind of go, I don't think it is like Airbnb.
I think it is.
It's exactly the same.
Okay. Okay, because bed and breakfast is the old-school way of saying it.
Well, there's like-
It's quainter.
Because bed and breakfast, you usually have somebody here that puts breakfast and stuff like that, Airbnb, basically-
We just don't want hourly rentals in Castle Hills.
Okay, so-
Maybe we should scratch this part, because I think there's a lot of confusion, a lot of concern.
Yeah.
Yeah, revisiting it.
Well, let me also ask you though, is Airbnb or something like that, a home occupation? I don't know the legal sense of that. If you Airbnb at your house for the Spurs playoff season next year, it's not my home occupation, and that's what it's falling under.
Well, it's here, but if you adopt the recommendations on the specific sections that say, "Short-term rentals are prohibited," they're prohibited in each of the districts that Mr. Isbrand listed, as the home occupation ordinance applies to. I do think it is a, really a philosophical issue, and the commission gets to make a recommendation on it, up or down, and same for item 14 as 15. I mean, if you're uncomfortable with that language, you can tweak it before you make your recommendation to council. On 15, you can drop it or try and accommodate some type of short-term use, but again, we want to make sure that if that, if you do want to allow some, a home occupation to include a short-term rental, then we need to revisit the definition of short-term rental and the list of prohibitions that would be incorporated if our other changes were adopted.
And what, does it change your opinion at all if what the bill in Austin, if that gets passed, when you were mentioning, does that change anything?
Yeah, it means that all of this provisions prohibiting it are void.
Okay.
Probably effective September 1 if the bill passes. Most legislation is effective on September 1.
Do you happen to know what bill it is?
I do not have it with me, I can email-
I'm just curious.
I can email Mr. Vanda Wall with the citation or a copy tomorrow if you want.
I've got a question on that, just to explore this a little bit further. How often do we have these short-term rentals?
How do you enforce it? How do you know?
Well, wait a minute, yeah, exactly, how do you know, how often does it happen? Have we experienced any problems with this? That's one area of looking at it. And going back to your home occupation, I mean, if we allow it, there would be some way of permitting it or something like that as a business and taxing it, I don't know. And that would, if we did something like that, that would seem to-
Allow it, but make money on it.
And that would kind of, and that would kind of control, I think, or limit that happening, I don't know. I think there are a lot of things, I think there are a lot of ways to look at this thing, and I think it, I think it needs to be discussed a little bit more.
That's a, it's a very dramatic comment, because our ordinance, as it reads right now, does not permit hotels or motels or even B&Bs probably, and there was litigation over that 20-some years ago, when someone wanted to put a hotel on the property by Lemonwood and 410.
Or the, you store it places now.
You're saying we do have an ordinance against?
No, there's no, no place in our ordinances is a hotel or a motel a permitted use, that's what I'm saying. As far as revenue, the city can impose a local hotel motel tax, however, the use of that tax is limited by statute, so that you can't just use it for general purposes. The uses I can remember are to increase tourism or for historical preservation. There may be a few others. One of the cities I represent, a city attorney, uses its hotel motel tax to improve historical buildings and to pay for advertising to promote more tourism in the city.
And do you know if there's a, is there any type of a legal definition of hotel motel house rental? Does that make them the same?
Technically, if someone is using their house and renting it for money to a third party, they are legally supposed to be filing a tax return with the comptroller and paying the hotel, the state hotel motel tax.
For short-term, only for short-term?
And for anything, for any rental of that kind, yes, any short-term rental. It's not if you're renting your house, you know, you have an investment property and you rent it for three years or a year to somebody, but for the short-term rentals, you're supposed to be paying the state hotel motel tax, and if the city has a tax, you add a little to that to pay the city tax.
So, if it became a problem, Airbnbs and the ordinance, if you had to pay the tax and somebody not-
That's a way to enforce it.
Creating problems, like, look, you do this, you stop doing this, and you pay this in power of our money, that might squelch it right there.
So, in the interest of time, it's my expectation that we are not going to take any action tonight, and I don't know that my expectations watching get through all of this tonight, but these are the kinds of things that I think we need to give due consideration to, and I also think it's important to not limit the ideas or the thoughts on this to five people sitting here, that we really need to, I mean, this would be a significant change for the city if we were to recommend going down this path, and we really need to engage, you know, the community in getting some thought on this. So, if y'all are agreeable, and I'm tying specifically to 1415, you might have some others here as well, but if you're agreeable, let's not table this, but let's put this aside for the moment, continue on, and at the point that we conclude this evening's meeting, we'll summarize either what we've left open, I think we've already summarized what we're asking for in other areas to come back on.
I'm in agreement.
I agree.
And while Mr. Schnall queues up the next thing, I again want to commend the committee that's done all this work. You know, when we look at this, we're seeing a sentence or two, and I imagine it was mountains of work and time and thought that went into this, and I can't say enough how much that we value and respect the work that they did, so thank you again for that.
It makes our code current too, when we talk about the energy, energy usage, I like that.
And that's what we're queuing up next. These are all-new provisions. For better or worse, I'll take responsibility for the solar energy provisions. They are modeled off of a solar energy ordinance from another city, not a Texas city, but another city, but they, you know, seemed to make sense. I think it is something that I feel personally stronger about y'all incorporating some solar energy provisions in our ordinance than the wind energy, because I think that the, because of the size of wind turbines, it's very unlikely we'll ever have a request for someone to put in a wind turbine, but I know a homeowners' association that I represent had to deal with enforcing its deed restrictions about the positioning of solar panels on a residence, and had to make sure that their provisions met the state law requirements. The solar energy people were able to get some statutes passed that restricted what a homeowners' association could do to regulate solar panels, not a city, just a homeowners' association. But I do think that having some reasonable limitations and some rules about solar panels is a good thing, and again, modernizes our ordinance. These weren't around in any significant way as recently as probably 12, 10, 12 years ago, when this ordinance was last substantially updated. So, these, this is the first page and a half of the alternative energy provisions, difference between a building-mounted system, something, you know, on a rooftop or, and a freestanding one, which would be where someone had the panels in, say, their backyard, and so there's a little distinction there, and, you know, compliance with the city electrical code. And then, probably the most important thing is, if you want to do this, you need a specific use permit, a special use permit, so that our ordinance on what someone has to bring to this commission and therefore bring to the council to get a special use permit is applicable. So, you'll get the level of detail that I think will help you make an informed decision about whether to recommend approval or non-approval of someone who wants to put in either a ground-mounted or a rooftop-mounted solar system. The wind energy units were drafted by, primarily by Susan Kilgore, some input by me and by the other members of the committee. Again, we have some specific standards, some location requirements, some height and ground clearance requirements, and again, the requirement for a special use permit for any wind energy units. When I presented this report to the former city manager, she was pleased about the solar energy provisions and wondered why we bothered with wind energy. And I didn't say this, but I thought back to, well, when we convened the committee, we were told to look at alternative energy options, and these are both options. As I said earlier, I do think that because of the size of the wind turbines, we may not need this provision, and even if we have it, I'm just not sure there's enough, there's really any place where someone would really want to try and do it. Far more expensive than a solar energy panel on your roof.
The wind units are usually driven by federal funding, and they require like 500 acres a minimum, but, I mean, they could conceivably, they don't have to all be located within the city, they could be located within Bear County, and that's how they get federal funding, is they lease up land, and whether or not they actually install the wind turbine.
But that's for, that's for a power system, I mean, you can do an individual-
Oh, yeah, those are small.
And, well, I agree with your assessment of wind energy versus solar energy, but I would take it, because I don't think it'd be cost-effective versus the solar energy, but I would take it further, I would prohibit wind energy units on individual residences. The reason I say that is because the two key components of wind energy are wind speed and the diameter of your blades. And so, to make it effective, you've got to get pretty high, above the tree line, above the houses, and conceivably, I mean, if people wanted to go that way, you'd have these things popping up, you know, so I would just restrict any kind of wind energy unit on a house, maybe on a commercial property, like, you know, maybe a, I don't know, well, not even on a commercial property, because then it'd have to be so big to generate enough energy to power it.
I agree with him.
So, I would, I would just not have wind energy units in the city. That's my technical assessment.
And I will tell the commission that a battle that I tried to wage and lost was a battle on the minimum lot size for a wind energy system.
Right.
So, it says 7,500, I would have wanted it to be much larger-
Right.
For some of the same reasons that you just said.
Right. So, I just don't, I just don't think there's any, I think it would be prohibited.
That issue plus, like you said, the height.
Right, I think it should, I think it should be prohibited.
Okay, well, that's, anyone else want to weigh in on that?
I have a question about the-
Really, like 100%.
Do we want to provide any feedback to Mr. Schnall tonight as the commission? Are you all inclined at this point, and if you don't have an opinion yet, don't feel the need to, on whether you want to see the wind energy units section in here?
Well, one of the things that I think does happen is that, given enough use, that they improve the technology and maybe the size, and I agree with you, it still requires a lot of space, and they do make a whoosh, depending on how big they are, and there's always something overhead moving around, so that it's disconcerting to me to have them, but given the way technology runs, maybe they'll be improved, so I don't know that we should necessarily categorically exclude them, but definitely limit them. And I agree with you, the 7,500 feet is way too small.
Yeah, I think that's my thought too. I don't know why we'd want to necessarily write them out, and you have a lot of restrictions in here, there's something, I agree, that 7,500 just seems too minimal if we, I mean, I don't know what it should be, but that's a small piece of ground.
Well, you know, one thing we could do is bring this back, and where it says under 5471B11, wind energy units are permitted in all zoning districts, we could say all non-residential zoning districts, and we could bring it back with a lot no bigger than something larger, and that might be a minimum of an acre, just as an example, which would, I think, address several of the concerns that have been expressed, and we could all, you could also make a decision that it's just not time yet to have any ordinance on wind energy units, other than to say they're not permitted.
So, I can't believe I'm saying, "I'm not sure I like this wind energy thing," but I'm not sure I like this wind energy thing. And I think Mr. Schnall addresses, my first question was, "Did all zoning districts bother me to begin with?" But I'm also bothered by the language of maximum heights for all wind energy units may not exceed the manufacturer's height recommendations, and-
They're going to be up there-
Yeah.
To get the wind.
Yeah.
And to your point, I mean, the technology has improved, and there's work now on micro wind turbines, you know, little bitty things, I don't know how effective they are, but again, it goes to Mr. Schnall's point that he stated initially, it's more cost-effective to use photovoltaic, solar panels. I mean, that's what you, I've looked at both, and the solar panels are much better, much more cost-effective.
So, if we were to eliminate this now, there's nothing that prevents it from ever being- If we were to eliminate this now, there's nothing that prevents it from ever being revisited. I guess my question though is, can we cite any municipalities of comparable size and proportion, zoning, whatever, similar to Castle Hills in which wind energy units are permitted? Did you all, Mr. Schnall, did y'all run into any examples?
I'm not aware of any. None of the cities that I represent allow, have any ordinances on them one way or the other. I don't even remember seeing wind energy described in deed restrictions for residential subdivisions. You know, like Ms. Baker, I, you know, I remember seeing, you know, this, this huge wind energy farm right outside, on I-10, right outside of Fort Stockton. And, and I remember seeing them about a year ago when I was in Costa Rica. But I've not seen any in Bear County.
Well, yeah, those are, those are commercial operations.
Yeah, right.
And they're cost-effective at that size. You see them in California too.
Right.
That's different from residential type.
Exactly.
So let me ask you a question. This number, on the height, number two, three double I, wind energy units, you're not like, see the maximum height allowable for a primary structure of a zoning district? What's, does anybody have any idea how high up we can put something on my residential lot? I mean, what, what is a height restriction? I'm just curious.
There's a height restriction in the A District. I don't want to guess, so I'll look it up. Yeah, I thought, I was going to say two stories are 35 feet. I think we changed it to just a total feet. Yeah.
Thirty-five, so I can put my TV antenna up, 35 feet?
Thirty-five feet, height, and it can't, and the bottom of it has to be 12 feet above the ground. So you're talking about what, what is that, 23 feet of turbine? So yeah, you wouldn't, if you're limited to 35 feet, you wouldn't put a wind tower in, any, wind turbine in anyhow. Yeah, and the, and the, and the buildings would block the wind, so it's not, not effective. I think the only consideration is whether or not you put something in, as Mr. Schnall recommended, either be silent on it or you put something in that prohibits them is probably the best course of action in this case.
Well, I love wind energy. I just hate to prohibit it. I, I don't want a bunch of them, you know, in the neighborhood. I don't think we're going to get there, but wind energy itself is great. I drive out to West Texas or drive out to New Mexico and I see miles and mi-, you drive to Sweetwater, you have 10 miles solid on the highway. I come back and I tell them all, and gas buddies, that we're going to put them out of business. You know, the concept itself is just wonderful, isn't it?
It is, and I've lived in West Texas twice and they got a lot of them out in West Texas. But guess what else they have in West Texas? Wind.
No, I, I know there's no.
And no trees.
I know, and there's no wind at, at our house. I understand, I appreciate all that.
No, no trees to block the wind.
I appreciate that. I just don't know that I want to say that you can't have them. I, I don't, I.
I guess with this, the only thing I could see people putting in would be these wind turbines that are more vertical in nature that, you know, are more, I don't know if they charge, they run them into their panel in their house or what they do with them, but they're small, you know? They're 20 feet high or something like that and they're more cylindrical in nature. You guys have probably seen them, they're prototype-type things. So that's, that would be, I think, the one thing that you'd be precluding is somebody that wanted to do something like that. Do you want to put the kibosh on that or?
And I will say, when I got the package to read and I got to the wind energy, I wondered the same thing that we had a comment earlier. Why is this in here again? I had the exact same, the solar, yes. The wind energy, I thought, why, why, why are we doing this?
I guess my question is, if we're silent on it and someone wants to put something in, do they have to come before the zoning commission or get a permit or do something without just building it? What is our protection for the city?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I, I think once we open the door with any kind of alternative energy provision, we should include something about wind to prevent someone from coming in and thinking they have an automatic right to put in a wind turbine without any restriction. So my thinking is that Mr. Vandewall and I come back to you with alternatives. One alternative would be they're simply not permitted at this time. And the other alternative is to scrub the current proposal to limit it to non-residential districts, to put in a much larger minimum lot size and to keep the SUP requirement. So that if someone could meet the size requirement in a commercial district, it would come back to this commission for consideration. And you have the same criteria for that special use permit that you have for any other special use permit, and those pretty strict standards. And, and I think we beefed them up a little bit in one of the other proposals you'll see to make sure that the city gets all the information that it needs or the city simply does not move a SUP request from the city manager's office to the zoning commission. So that there's another element of protection built into one of the other text changes.
I would love to see an example of a city comparable nature of ours that, in which this is taking place or if there is one. So it sounds like that's more work to be done there to bring back some clarity on.
You modeled it after a non-Texas city anyway?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, not, not this. I didn't do the wind.
Okay.
The solar is off of a, I think it was in Minnesota.
Can I ask a question about the solar one? Section three, item three, "A freestanding solar energy system with panels four square feet or less in size is exempt from the requirements of the section." The way I would read that is I could have a bunch of panels that are three feet and put them all together and I'm exempt from it. Is that the intention of this? Or is it the intention that it's limiting the total size to less than four feet?
Less than, the total size.
So I think then wouldn't, I, I guess should the words "with panels" then be removed from that? That the freestanding solar energy system, four square feet or less in size is exempt?
That's fine. Fine to take that out.
I mean.
I, I appreciate the clarification. I think we do take that out.
Because I'd, I'd be trying to get around the rules if I saw it. I'd buy all three-foot panels and put 100 of them up and say, hey, yeah? That's right. Okay.
This is, I think, good catch. I think this is to allow, are you talking about taking it out completely?
The, the words "with panels", because my interpretation of that's "with panels four square feet or less in size" versus a system four feet, four square feet or less in size.
Right. I think, I think that's a good call and a good catch. And so, again, I'll work with Mr. Vandewalle to get that changed. Anything else on solar and wind energy right now? The, the next two sections really don't take much time. The, the zoning and permitted use matrix chart, this was requested by city staff. Many other cities have incorporated charts of this kind into their zoning ordinances. Just makes it easier for, you know, anyone who is considering something to know, you know, is it automatically permitted or do I need a, a special use permit? Or is it not permitted at all? So this chart, and Mr. Shands did some fine tuning with me on this chart during his interim tenure. Then the low income pack, low impact development memorandum is from Eric Friedland, who is a assistant city attorney and who analyzed low impact development. And his recommendation and that of the committee was that the zoning ordinance is not the place to address low impact development. If it's going to be addressed anywhere, it might be addressed in the subdivision ordinance. So we make no recommendation on low impacted development. And that brings us back then to the first three pages in the material that was circulated. I'm going to ask Mr. Vandewall to go back in and let's scroll through these. These are in, I think, numerical order, at least I was hoping to put them in numerical order. So we're going up to 50 dash 36C.
Mr. Schnall, would you clarify for us again, please, the, your comment on why the low impact development was not, it was determined not to include that in this?
Because it, it's not zoning. It, the, the sense was that it, it's not, low impact development is development that, that doesn't cause undue runoff and things of that nature. And, and the committee felt that since those kinds of issues are usually the subject of, of Platts and subdivision regulation, that if the city wanted to incorporate any low impact requirements, low impact development requirements, the place to do that is in the subdivision ordinance. They can, but most cities have adopted, and, and by local government code, the legislature has encouraged communities to adopt an, an international building code of one kind or another. Mr. Vandewall, he's got the, the desk book of the local government code. I can't remember the section, but there's a, a section in the local government code that talks about a, a series of international codes, like the international building code and the international maintenance code, property maintenance code, things like that. What the city can do is adopt local amendments to the building code that incorporate things like low impact development. And that, that's another place to put it, absolutely.
Do you know if there is any push to get this put into the Platts and subdivision regs?
I'm not aware of it. I, I don't think that those rules have, have been delegated to any citizen committee or that any direction has been given to the, the city attorney or perhaps more importantly, the city engineer to make recommendations about this. That would probably be the next step if, if there was interest by the commission in, in having low impact development regulations developed. That would be something that, that the city engineer might do in conjunction with the city attorney.
I really liked it. I'm sorry, it's gone.
It's a multifaceted.
Yeah.
Aspect. And, and one thing is educating citizens. So that might be something we, we put ideas on the, on the Castle Hills website too. You know, like a section for low impact developments that people can implement themselves.
Okay, Mr. Schnall, you said you thought we're going faster than you anticipated. We're through item one of 36, so.
Excuse me? Yeah. Wait a minute. What, what are we talking about here? Oh, it's, it's a martix, it's not a matrix. Okay, Mr. Shan, Mr. Mr. Vandewalle, Mr. Shands was supposed to get with Terry Ohr and clean this up. I don't know if you have it in a format that you can edit. But if you do, will you please correct martix to matrix? And then there, there are more markups. This is, this is, you know, purely administrative. I thought, I know that the, the three or four items that Mr. Shands pointed out to me, he and I reviewed and those changes were made. I did not go through it other than to monitor that. Yet another member of the committee, you know, worked on it and presented it. But, you know, we, you know, I, I do certainly have a responsibility and I apologize for that typo, which I should have caught. I did catch a typo in my memo after it was sent. And so I corrected it and resent my memo, which fortunately is the one I think that, that got circulated. A lot of the changes in, in the memo, which is the list of one through 35, are, to some extent, a minor word changes that are, were designed for clarification. And the, the first one, which is 50 dash 36C, which we have up on the screen, just changes the last phrase so that it's surfaced requirements defined in chapter 50 rather than the surface requirements of chapter 50.
Can I interrupt for just a moment? Are we going to go over 35 of these on the screen? Because I really don't want to do that. I would much rather have something in front of me where I could sit down at my desk. It's not going to do me any good to, it, it, I can appreciate this, but it's not going to be any good to sit here in this environment and try to get any sort of understanding.
You want something with track changes in it that you can just see?
So I really need a hard copy that I can go home with or that can be sent to me that I can look at. So I, I appreciate you going over 35 of these, but I'm not going to have a better, I'm afraid I'm not going to have a better feel for when we get done with that than if we just, I'd like, I'd like for you to give this an overview. And then I, I'd like to go home something, or go home with something or ask somebody, send me something that I can sit down with and look at. This environment's not going to get, get me there.
Maybe we can address these next month?
Right. Yeah, it's, it's just not going to do as far as here. I mean, these other ones were different, but this is not going to happen.
Okay.
In my opinion.
What, what if we ask maybe staff or somebody to do a redline version? Or something?
I think this new gung-ho city manager we have is willing to take that on.
I mean, that's what we need, you know?
I agree.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that, I, I agree that that would make your job a lot easier. And I'm delighted not to stand up here and give you 35 comments.
You're probably tired of reading, aren't you?
And, and I started going from document to document today.
It's just not going to happen for you.
It's just going to be a waste of time.
Yes. Okay.
That's what we need. We can each easily do it at home and come back next month and, and be ready to go, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken, for the suggestion, Mr. Vandewall for offering the city staff to accomplish that. Yeah, well, we'll address a meeting time at, Mr. Schnall and I have already visited on that, but we, we'll address that shortly. Were there other things then, Mr. Schnall, of these?
No, I, I really, I really like the idea of the redline. I think that's an excellent idea. It, it will make your job easier. It'll also make the council's job easier. The only, the only comment I'll make about that is whether you want the redline to incorporate only these text changes on the first three pages to begin with or do you want that redline to incorporate everything?
I'm not sure I understand what you're, what, what is everything?
Well, for example, right now, Division 13 is two sections about planned unit development. We spent a few minutes this evening talking about four pages of new text on planned unit development. Staff can incorporate the new language in as a redline, if you want.
I think at this point that we're not quite there on these other documents yet. So I think the redlines should just include this.
Okay.
For now. I mean, that's my thought. And then we come back whenever it is, next month or the following, and we'll have maybe some additional discussion on the, on the, on the, on the PUDs and the solar and the, and the wind and so forth. I don't think all that needs to be incorporated into it now. That seems like a lot of work for things that may be changed a little bit more. That seems like a lot of work for things that maybe change a little bit more.
That work for everybody? I think we're all in agreement on that. That work? Little less lift there. All right, anything else, Mr. Schnall, on any of these?
No, I thank you for your, your attention. This is not the most interesting work in the world. And I do thank you for your attention and your courtesy. And, you know, I will be glad to be back for your April meeting. As I mentioned to both Mr. VanderWaal and Mr. Isbrand, I have the unfortunate opportunity to be at two meetings at the same time on March seventh, neither of which is in this room. So I'm going to try and clone myself to be in two places at once, or at least in both places for part of the evening. And that's just a scheduling issue that I don't control.
So with that said, I think what I'd like to do is to schedule our next meeting for April the fourth at seven PM to complete this. And also, as part of that agenda, like to schedule a public hearing. I think we should make every attempt in that meeting to encourage input from the community on this, particularly if we're going to go down the path of our Airbnb issue and some of these others. I think this gives us sixty days for it to be communicated as effectively as it can be to the community, what is going on here. Perhaps it'll be equally as well attended as tonight, but I think we should at least try to make that gesture. And schedule a public hearing to go with it, resolve our work, hear what the public has to say, and then see if we're comfortable with making a recommendation at that point to council.
Look, I have a question about this subject in particular. We talked about several things around, occupational, home occupation, and rentals of rooms, and things like that. How do we get our arms around definitions, the current rules, what we can or cannot enforce, and things like that, so we can move forward on, to frame it for the public input?
I'm not quite sure what you're asking, would you restate the question?
Well, if we're going to have a, say, a public hearing, let's go on that subject, because I assume the whole of the changes that we're recommending. How are we going to frame the wording in the documents? We have many questions, we can't really change it. It still stands as it's recommended at the moment.
Okay, I think I see what you're saying.
So do we have an action to clean that up prior to...
Okay, so, yeah, okay, so if I understand you correctly, and it's a good thought on this, that we should spend the April meeting cleaning it up, addressing what we believe would be the final recommendation from the committee with some direction we've given it, then schedule a public hearing. If we choose to solicit that input, which I believe we all would want to, then we would vote to make a recommendation to council. So in that timeframe, we would have an April fourth meeting to complete this work, a May meeting to solicit any public input on it, and for us to take a, a final vote, or make a final recommendation, and then pass it off to council at that time. Is that, that was good thought, thank you for bringing that up. Does that work for everybody? We comfortable with that? Staff and Mr. Schnall, y'all comfortable with that? Staff, I could call you by name, is that right?
Yeah, that, that May meeting looks like it'll be May second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, does that work? All right. Any other comments? We exhausted the subject for tonight. It is eight fifty-eight PM, and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.